He's not ready for it. I'll plan better tomorrow. All right, so just five thirty, I will call this work session on October twentieth to order. Uh, let's see, first, uh, we have the quarterly public safety updates. Chief Walsh, welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. Where am I going? Anywhere?
Where?
Right up front.
Wait, where?
Wherever we wanna go. So, a quick update from the fire department side. Um, so far this year, we are at three hundred and five calls. Last month, we had our biggest month with forty-four calls for the month. Um, the last one we had that was forty-one calls was back in January of this, this year. So, we are increasing it almost every month. Um, so far, in October, today is the twentieth, and we're at twenty-three calls for the month. So, total, we're about fifty-three over where we were this time last year. So, we're, we're thinking roughly three sixty, three eighty, somewhere in there we're gonna land. Hopefully, it's on the lower side, but either way, it's gonna be more than what we had in the previous year. Um, one of the quick highlights is just in the last six weeks, for whatever reason, we've had six motorvee- motor vehicle accidents, and all of those accidents totaled every vehicle that was on the road, which is unusual.
Are there any trends, like it's in one area, or?
We had three right at Big Woods and Eleven, or JCP.
Really?
Um, and all three were significant, and for whatever reason, there's a, uh, stop sign that people just don't see. Not sure why that is, but.
Also with that roundabout happening, I know we ended up taking that route more to get back to Carver. I wonder if that's why, there was more traffic there because of the roundabout by the school.
Yeah, I don't know. It just, those seem to be some of our bigger calls right there when they do happen. For whatever that reason is, I don't know, but.
Well, just a second. So, tha- that's the commonality with three collisions, the total vehicles, they didn't stop?
That is my understanding.
Okay. So, do we have information on that intersection prior to this month? Is that a trend and something we look at?
I do think.
He's the fire chief, he's not the.
It's something that I do believe the sheriff's office keeps tallies on.
Well, I mean, but we would, we'd have some numbers here. I, okay. If it's, if it's a sign that needs, you know, lights around it or something, maybe that's something we look at.
Yeah.
But three in a month sounds like a lot if they're that significant.
Mm-hmm.
Fender benders are one thing, but totaling out a vehicle?
Yeah.
Three times on one intersection.
The county does have a roundabout planned for that intersection at the end of the decade, so.
Well, cool. Good enough.
Is that in our city limits or in our city growth area?
It's in our growth area. It's not in our current city limits, but it's, we're fortunate from a cost participation standpoint. All four legs are county roads there, so.
Cause I'm telling them, what, one forty, forty?
Yeah, Big Woods, they call it.
Yeah, but it was one forty.
One forty.
It's half Chaska, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. Otherwise, that's all I had. Unless you have some questions for me?
Do you wanna talk a little bit about, we just had our fire board meeting last week?
Yep.
Any highlights, anything that you wanna note from that meeting?
Um, the, um, fire board we had with San Francisco Township, um, and Dahlgren Township, and of course, city staff was there. One of the big takeaways I thought was really, really nice to hear is from the townships on how well we do in regards to our budgeting process, but communicating that process and what we do and how we do things, what we're planning for. Um, been in the fire service a lot of years, did another stint as fire chief in another community, and never really heard that kind of feedback, good feedback. Hmm, we are probably one of the only ones that has gotten that kind of praise. I've seen some of the other, um, communities that, um, they struggle with some of that stuff. And that was a huge takeaway for me, so that's good for us and the city staff, that what we're doing is the right thing and, you know, making sure that they're aware of that stuff. So, that was my big takeaway.
Yeah, we did, we went over the budget and then, um, you know, we, where you've changed kind of the long-term budget. So, the townships are very pleased with that, to be able to see and to plan ahead, knowing that as we annex, there's, you know, they'll have less, um, fees and, and folks that we're covering, um, in the same way, because obviously we contract, they contract with us for fire service. But, yeah, I was happy to hear that too during the meeting, that it doesn't, what they saw, you know, their understanding of when we need new fire trucks and when we need, um, other things, and they just, there wasn't a lot of pushback from them, that it was something shocking, or that they were, I guess, I don't wanna say fearful, but that they were, you know, hesitant about what we were spending. So, yeah, Tim's right on with that, that they were very pleased with how we budget and that we are, um, bringing that information to them well in advance, too.
They also commented that it really helped them with their constituents, and they made a note that it is not that way with another department that they interact with. So, that was, I, I thought the same thing. I thought that was very complimentary of the work that you guys were doing.
That was gonna be my question. Both Dahlgren and San Francisco Township contract with other departments too to cover different portions of the communities.
Correct. Yep.
Let's have more questions.
All right.
Well done. Hey, just one quick question. Of the three hundred and five calls, what percentage would you say are medicals? Is that still a high percentage?
Yeah, it's probably anywhere from the fifty-five to sixty-two, somewhere in there.
Okay.
It's more than half.
Okay. That's not precise, I was thinking. Um, okay. Good to know.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Deputy Nelson, welcome.
Hello.
How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Good. What's going on in the sheriff's department world?
Recent memory, nothing comes to mind. Um, in my weekly reports, all the numbers have stayed relatively the same or similar as past weeks. We are gonna probably see a little bit of a shift in calls for service as we get cooler weather coming through. Um, we might see some different types of calls, maybe some more traffic related stuff, uh, as weather comes into play. But hopefully, we get out of kind of the busy season and, and our calls for service kinda go down a little bit. But, uh, we've had a recent uptick in shoplifting for some reason. Uh, also, they're all, uh, leave farm right now. Um, none of our local businesses down here. We have had some burglaries, uh, occur. Uh, I don't know if anybody heard about the Dahlgren Golf Course had a burglary. Um, and it was a group of people that is currently being tracked by multiple agencies. Um, they have suspects in mind. So, I went around and talked with a number of our businesses downtown, and they're all aware of it. So, um, some sec- security talks had taken place recently for that reason. But I don't have anything really to share, anything groundbreaking or, uh, otherwise alarming. So, if anybody has any questions about any of my recent weekly reports, or anything that you, um, have brought to your attention by citizen, I'm more than happy to try and clarify or answer any questions.
Our last work session, I believe it was the last one, um, I had mentioned to have your deputies going through the parks a little bit more in the evenings, um, just to make sure, cause graffiti time and things like that, um, and, you know, we get towards Halloween and the mischief begins, right?
Yeah.
Um, is that taking place? Are you, have you seen anything there, or you're, is the rest of the team?
So, as far as I, so as far as I know, it's time for M C O D A R checking our parks. Um, the message was to look at all of our cars in the area that do work in the overnight hours.
Okay.
I haven't received any word from any of our public works people about additional graffiti or damage to property. Um, so I think we've been okay there. But, uh, yeah, to your point, Halloween and this time of the year, hopefully, I'll, uh, send out another reminder for them to continue to check, especially at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Do you have any hiring updates? Are there still two deputies down?
So, yep, we are still, we still have two vacancies within the leasing contract right now. We have, uh, I believe, within the next couple of weeks or so, we have around eight deputies in training currently.
Okay.
Um, so we are still very active in, uh, the hiring process. Um, and we'll be holding more interviews, I think, uh, probably sometime later this year or early next year. We're trying to space out a little bit. We've got, we've pretty much reached our limit for training at this point, you know, we can only have so many on field training. Um, we anticipate roughly three of them hopefully coming on field training soon. I don't know where they're gonna be allotted to, but I'm, uh, I'm hopeful that we get some, some fills, at least for twenty twenty-six, so. Um, we did just start our shipbit process for that as well, so we're kinda waiting to see who, um, stays, uh, where they're at, and, and, you know, if we have any movement. I'll be re- remaining in the same position. If that wasn't already, um, made aware to you, I'll be continuing my role as liaison and on the team one day side, so.
Okay. Great. You anticipated my question. That's good. Is that you, Eric?
It is me.
Deputy Nelson, is that you?
Am I gonna get a call here, so?
I'm just gonna disarm it.
Um, is the Carver Victoria split still going okay?
Yeah. It's, uh, definitely better now that the, uh, money's a little bit. It's definitely cut down that, uh, between time and time drastically. But, yeah, I, it's still, it still works out well for us, especially when we have on the team one side, we have that power car. We have Deputy Schumacher who checks on at three P M. And again, he helps alleviate some of those afternoon calls and frees me up for some other activities, too.
All right. Um, last question. Earlier this year, we, um, added to our parking ordinance, talking about length of cars, or length of time that cars are left on the streets and then in public parking lots. Have you been issuing any tickets for that?
Not lately. Um, I've been very cautious or conscious of checking, um, especially as you drive by our main large one that we got a lot of complaints at over at the, the metro. Um, it's really cut down a lot, and it's, it's given us a lot more ability, because we can very easily describe and explain to people that, yes, this is a violation. It's very clear, you cannot continue to park here. Um, we have gotten, you know, calls here and there about it, and, uh, we still encourage people to call us, because it's difficult for us to see all the vehicles on every single road.
Sure.
Um, definitely a great way for us to enforce it, though it's helped us a lot.
Right. Any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I have something for you. So, if I, if we were in the other room, I'd just scoot this over to you.
Is it a form that I emailed to you a while ago?
It is.
I was wondering where this is at.
Yeah. Does this one need to be signed in front of you that said witness?
Okay.
Is this Eric's work release now? Is she asking that?
Okay. So, you got what you need?
Yep, yep. This'll be good, and I will be in touch about finding a good time for that.
All right.
Are they gonna give you permission to drive to car?
I hope they let me sit in the front.
If you don't.
This time.
Yes.
Can you put him in the back and then take pictures? Oh, I'm sorry. He's not allowed in the front seat. I want pictures.
Yeah. Well, speaking of picture opportunities, uh, the, I'm sure Tim might have touched on it, the open house event went really well.
Oh, good.
Um, I was, yeah, it was good for us to be there. State Patrol also showed up as well if anybody saw them, so that was a good event put on by the department, so.
Awesome. Great, you had great weather for it.
Yeah, it was beautiful. Perfect.
Awesome. All right. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Be safe. Um, all right. Up next, we've got the ten-year financial plan review. Let's see.
All right. Thank you, Eric Council. Uh, so this will be the third year that we will be working with Northland Securities in partnership to update our ten-year financial plan. Um, and the plan, as we know, is not our operating budget. However, it's a strategic way to plan, um, to help council and the city guide to make decisions for the future. Um, so it analyzes, um, how our planned investments and, um, growth and tax impact will, um, impact not only the tax rate, but utility rates for the future. Um, so we have worked, uh, by presenting over the last few months, a number of different capital improvement plans, from streets to parks to staffing, um, to infrastructure. And we have thrown that all in here with many different assumptions as far as growth, um, throughout the city and, um, expenses. And just a, it's taken a lot of work and, um, effort from all staff. And, um, we've come up with what we think is the best plan for the next ten years. Um, and so to present it tonight is Jazz Green and Tammy Omdal from, uh, Northland Securities. And I'm going to get my screen correct here, and then I will pull up the presentation.
Good evening, Mary Council. I'm supposed to use my mother voice. I'm a mother, so.
Talk loud, cause I'm not a loud talker.
That was a very nice introduction, and, and it is our third ten before you, and you're gonna hear some of the same themes. This is not your budget. You're gonna see that on a slide as well. This is a reflection of your staff's work and your work with respect to capital improvement planning at a point in time. This is an ongoing piece of work, too, that your staff, when they're making decisions with you, and how will this impact our ten-year plan? So, just know that, um, we're not here to say, well, here you go, here's your ten plan. As you know, it's hard enough to do the upcoming budget and the assumptions. Ten years is a long time. This is meant to be macro. It's meant to be based upon certain assumptions. This is what it would look like. And as you may recall, in the past, I've said to you, it's really meant to say, if you see big things, like I don't like how that, that's showing in tax rate or whatever, they have the big policy decisions, not decisions or that I think the tax rate should be this or the levy. That's not what this is. It's your budget that you make these decisions. But because this is so long-term and forward-looking, it helps inform those annual decisions that you make with respect to your budget. So, hopefully, that lays the foundation. It's a very lengthy report, and I'll talk about why that is. So, thank you, um, Lynn, for having that up. So, as noted, it's your, not your budget. I gotta put my glasses on here. The other piece, it's a snapshot in time, especially with development, with, um, the city being a growing community. Your staff makes certain assumptions, and when we look at some charts on that, I would remind you that we're being conservative in those assumptions while development happens over another, a number of years with respect to real caps. We are forecasting based upon the estimated completion of a subdivision in a project. That's more conservative than assuming more units upfront phased in. So, that's an important point. Um, if you go to the next one, the revenue, we focus on two things. Revenue sufficiency to pay for your plans, your capital, operations, debt service. And what does that mean for your levy and rate? Rate means not just utility rates, but the city's tax rate that applies with respect to property taxes. The revenue sufficiency is noted, we're not looking just at capital, but it's general government operations. Utilities are included in that as well. Capital improvement, your capital improvement plan, it's not set in stone. That's ever-changing to your needs. This is at a point in time, what would that look like with respect to bonding versus cash? If you can go to the next slide. With this, um, levy and rate, we do model, um, levies, but we also model tax rate. And later, I'll give you a slide, tax rates are a factor of your tax base, your levy spread over that base. So, that's based upon assumptions for development, number of new housing units, commercial development that generates said value. With respect to your utility rates, Carver has a long history, even before Northland was involved in the last three years, looking at your utility funds and rate adjustments. This helps inform that on a comprehensive basis. There are some studies, including here in the metro, that don't adjust their rates on a annual basis. And now, that becomes a challenge, because then typically, when you do have to adjust, there are much larger rate increases to catch up. But you have a long history of planning. Can you go to the next slide? As far as the approach, and Lynn mentioned this, that Northland, um, Jessica and our team, and I worked with your staff, including ran a bunch of scenarios tonight, and, and in the plan, you see a final scenario based upon your most current capital improvement plan. But just know there were different scenarios that we reviewed jointly, um, to get to this point, to present to you tonight. If you go to the next slide. On the revenue sufficiency, so to, again, that means what revenue is needed to meet current and future obligations. Obligations include projections for staffing and operating costs, debt service where there is currently debt service or future debt service planned. The city does have an adopted fund balance policy specific to your general fund, and that forty percent of annual expenditures. We'll talk about that and look at it on a forecasted basis. For the utility funds, utility funds rely on user fees. They do not rely on property tax levy. We look at and forecast out three objectives. Is projected cash, ending cash by year over those ten years sufficient to meet three months of operating expense? Following year debt service payments, that's conservative, cause debt service payments are paid twice a year. But we look at projected basis at year-end, is there cash sufficient to meet the following year debt service? Capital acquisition, where you're planning to use cash, so you have a C I P, and if there's not bonding assumed in your long-term plan, is cash projected to be sufficient so that you don't have to issue bonds? So, we model that out and get into the proposed rates. And then the last one, some reserve for future capital improvements, the best laid plans. Of course, there's things that happen. There's flooding, emergencies, other things, and do you have cash available to help deal with that? If you go to the next one. So, now I have a couple of slides. I wanna talk about the city tax levy and tax rate. So, as you know, you adopt annually your tax levy. That, you do not set the city tax rate. That's where the county auditor's office and assessor's office come in, because the county values property, does the calculation of net tax capacity as determined by the legislature. The legislature determines how much, based upon a property's classification, classification is subject to property taxes, class rates. The tax rate is simply math. It's the levy that you certify, spread over your net tax capacity as calculated by the county. That gets to your city tax rate. That's true for all taxing jurisdictions in Minnesota. And then the last point, again, net tax capacity is a term in Minnesota, and that is a factor of the assessed taxable market value of a property times their classification rate as determined by the legislature, not determined by the legal taxing jurisdiction. Can you go to the next one? So, the plan provides information on projected future city tax rates to show the potential impact of planned tax levy on taxpayers. If we didn't do that, and because you're growing, it would just show the tax levy without context. We're showing, how does that compare to your growth? You have capital improvement projects, because you have growth and you need funding in order to support that. So, we're modeling out both what you need to levy and the net tax capacity or the taxable market value. There's many factors that impact that final tax rate. Many of these factors are outside of your control, including when the legislature changes programs, the market value homestead credit program. When they change how much commercial tax, property tax pays compared to residential, you do not have control over those factors. Ten years is a long time. It's probably reasonable that something could happen with class rates. We make no assumption as to what the legislature may do. We assume current law when estimating out that tax capacity. And again, your focus on your budget is your annual tax levy. This long-term plan gives you context for what that may mean to your taxpayers. Can you go to the next one? So, now I'm gonna have a couple of slides. In the actual report, there's a big ugly table. I think it's table number two, that actually, if you're curious, is your staff projected out by development area housing units. Here, it's just graphically showing you the increase in taxable market. Here, it's just graphically showing you the increase in taxable market value from new development, and you can see that by year. And again, we are making the assumption in the plan that when staff is projecting out housing units, we are modeling it based upon the estimated completion of that development area to be more conservative. If you go to the next one? So now, this is showing net tax capacity. Remember, as I just said a moment ago, the legislature determines how much of value is taxable to get to net tax capacity. This factors that in, and that yellow is the new construction. We also make an assumption that your underlying existing property values will grow. And you can see that reflected in here with addition of the new construction. If you go to the next one? This is showing total city tax levy, I will note something here, um, there should be a yellow bar in the legend that says general fund. That yellow is the general fund, on top of that is the debt service. Down levy, then a levy for street maintenance, fire department, park development. This is in addition to park development fees and then total. So this is total city tax levies projected to increase with growth in the city. But again, the report gives you context for that, because the reason you have some of these projects and levies is in direct relationship to the growth in the community. Can you go to the next one? This is showing then, city tax rate projected. And again, that is a factor of estimated levies by year, spread over the estimated net tax capacity. The reason that year twenty twenty eight is highlighted, and you see that jump from twenty eight to twenty nine. Jessica, in a moment, is gonna talk about the capital improvement plan. But this assumes that in twenty twenty nine would be the first year that you'd have the levy impact from the public service facility. So that's why you see that jump. But we highlight twenty twenty eight, because in reality, maybe you don't have this up and down drop, we make no assumption for that, that you levy for some one ten dollars and maybe that helps to reduce some of the bonding in future years. But right now, we did not play around with that, we just said it would drop in year twenty twenty eight, and then it would quickly go up in twenty twenty nine with the additional levy. And then, the table to the right is on a numerical basis, showing you that change in that tax rate. And again, annually, you make these decisions, but you'd want to forecast and look at that, well, maybe we should, you know, be thinking about twenty twenty eight and what we may do there in order to not have this one time drop in that tax rate and then having to explain it to the property taxpayers the following year. If you go to the next one, Lynn?
He is cool for that, just wanted to jump in. So this is probably one of the best reasons we have for doing the ten year plan, because normally, if you didn't have this ten year outlook, you'd get to that year twenty twenty eight, and you're like, hey, we're dropping, and the next year, you go up. And so if you think of this in the confines of your strategic plan, of not wanting to increase the tax rate by any more than three percent, fundamentally, using this data as we see it today, you could get there by building that debt service muscle and having that tax rate in twenty eight be at forty four percent, and then moving it to twenty nine. But, uh, kind of irrelevant of kind of where you are on that spectrum of decision making and choices, this gives you a line of sight to the opportunity to make choices and how you want that budget to land and how that integrates with when you wanna make that investment into public services. And so this is the best example that I know of within the confines of this plan of why you do this work, so that you can see this. Because then you can see the tax rate goes down, you know, as a trend line. So knowing that and then knowing the other capital investments that you have in water and sewer, et cetera, how do you make all these pieces fit together? We want this to be a tool to help you make those choices.
I would add one thing to what Brent said there. It's also possible, but again, I mentioned, we're being conservative on the timing of development, being at the final year. Let's just say things go really well in twenty twenty six, because construction in twenty twenty six versus taxes payable would be in twenty twenty eight. So that may provide some additional relief, relief that would also cause the tax rate to be even lower. So to Brent's point, the watching of what happens there and what you may do with that opportunity. Can you go, there's two slides, and then I'm gonna turn it over to Jessica. So this is just graphing for a residential, um, property, um, city property taxes. And example three, we should have put that in the slide, I think that one is about a half a million dollar example. So you can see that increase from twenty eight to twenty nine that we were talking about. That is when the debt service impact of the public services building would come on. And if you can go to the next one. And this commercial property is a million dollar example, same thing, the taxes are different, because it's a commercial property, a different value. But that jump from twenty eight to twenty nine related to that debt service level. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to Jessica, and now we're gonna get into, or I guess I have one more slide, if you can go. Um, this is showing, and there's a lot of schedules in the report, but this is just a snapshot of projecting, projected ending cash balance by year between twenty twenty four and twenty thirty five. There's shown to be, I wanna point out the top line, the enterprise fund, some growth there. We make assumptions in the report, including with treatment and other things on how much would be bonded versus cash. Time will tell whether or not you would actually accumulate that amount of cash and could maybe look at reducing some of the bonding that is shown in the report or, um, other changes, but as projected, that cash would grow and that is planned. But it's also that balance of how much in reserves for those unforeseen events versus spending that down on capital on one time. And with that.
I'm just gonna jump in real quick, Tammy, I may need your help on this, but. So Tammy had mentioned at the start of the presentation that your fund balance policy asks for forty percent of the general fund for that, that next year. Well, as that trend goes, that forty percent will get larger as our budget get lar, gets larger. But as you know, uh, our, we don't budget for surplus, we, and I think that's one of the charms of our organization, is we keep a real tight budget. But what that also means is that organically, we don't build fund surplus unless, uh, we have vacancies in the sheriff's office or something doesn't happen. And so Tammy, if you could just explain that at, at some point, if it doesn't organically happen and we don't budget for it, you might end up having to budget for it, and it's not necessarily a sign of weakness, it's a sign of the, the budget fundamentals that we use on a annual basis. Can you speak to that a little bit, Tammy?
I can't, so we actually have a slide here in the beginning of the funds, but we're gonna jump into this now. So, and you may remember this ugly slide from last year when we were talking about it, let me tell you what's before you, and this is just simply illustrating exactly what Brent was saying. So, the policy states that the city, I'm gonna read it, shall maintain unassigned fund balance in the general fund, not less than forty percent of the next year's budget expenditures of the general fund. Very clear, consistent, and range of other cities. Budget expenditures of the general fund are projected to increase annually to support growth. As Brent said, your budget's growing every year. But what's not is because the city does a nice job of budgeting fairly close to where you come in. Some cities have larger surpluses that help build that. And you can have that policy discussion of, you know, is it good to be so close to budget or cities that have larger, um, surpluses every year? I'm not here to speak to that, other than noting that your budget comes in, you don't have large surpluses. That's good when it comes to your budget, the challenge becomes, because you are a growing community, exactly what Brent said, every year, your general fund is getting larger in order to, more staff, more services to your residents. To stick with your policy, though, because you're not organically growing that fund balance from having budget, large budget savings every year, at some point, in order to stay true to your policy, and that matters for your bond rating as well, you may find yourself in a position of having to levy property taxes for the purposes of generating cash for your fund balance. There are growing communities, including ones that we've worked in the metro, that have to do that, because their budgets are so tight. And in order to stay true to that fund balance policy, and the reason you have that policy is you collect taxes twice a year. And you need to be able to fund services in between and, of course, contingency. But this chart, now I'll speak to the chart. So the dark green, the bottom line, is the projecting ending fund balance as of twenty twenty five. Because we're assuming that you have a balanced budget every year, so your fund balance would be, stay constant. You see what I'm saying there? So every year, you budget that you're gonna collect this much in revenue and you're gonna spend this much with no surplus, so balanced budget. So the reason the green bar, that's not a mistake, it says your projected ending fund balance, including when the plan, would be at your, um, year end level. The next bar, and I'm looking at year twenty twenty six, where it's hashed, that's your current year levy and or budgeted savings needed to achieve that forty percent. So in twenty twenty six, it's saying that you would have to levy, and the line that's shown there is that forty percent of expenses, in order to ensure that you have fund balance equal to forty percent of expenses. The darker green with the dots is simply, so you do it one year, now you've accumulated some, you do it the next year, you levy and you accumulate. Whether or not this will actually come to bear that you have to do this to be true to your policy, ultimately, you make your budget decisions will depend on your surpluses. Or in years of unforeseen events, deficits would make that even more challenging, because then you're even shorter from that. This is important, because currently, on paper, you have not been at that forty percent, and you have bond issuance plans. This is very important to the rating agencies, because it provides additional security for investors in your bonds. Then in unforeseen events, that the city has enough cash reserves and fund balance to deal with that. So we talked about it last year, this challenge has not gone away, it is, is still here. So the challenge at some point is a real policy decision, okay, we can't do a balanced budget, we are going to have to levy more than our expenses would require in order to generate cash to build fund balance. That's a lo, a lot of detail and I can see, I can see the challenge, but at the simplest level, just think of your, uh, fund balance as your savings account. And you're not growing your savings account, because each year, you're spending exactly what you're bringing in, which is good, you have a, a balanced budget. The challenge becomes, your budget's growing, so your reserves, your fund balance is becoming a smaller and a smaller percent. And you have a policy, a good policy, that says you'll be at forty percent of the following year's expenditures. Lynn, Brent, you wanna add anything to that?
Does that resonate with the council?
It is, I see a statement, so were we gonna talk about strategy?
Or, so with last year's audit, we are at forty percent. And so we've, in kind of recent times, have been fundamentally helped by, it's kind of a good and bad problem. Like, the vacancy in the sheriff's office has kind of reduced our, um, expenditures by, you know, close to half. So on one hand, you, you know, that's a good source of surplus building, on the other hand, you're not getting what you're contracted for, for law enforcement. And so, you know, and there are, you know, some communities, and this has been cleaned up, but some communities are pretty liberal or conservative with building inspection fees, and that's kind of the driver, but ultimately, you know, Lynn and I and the team will use this plan. And so, in the coming years, we might come to you with an unallocated fifty thousand dollar fund balance expenditure, even though it's not for like anything other than, I would offer financial security that, you know, when you get into this position, like we did the, the bond rating for, I think it was the fire station. We went through all the steps that we were taking to bring that fund balance back up to forty percent, some of the budget decisions that the council had made, some of the vacancy savings. So it's, it's not a small part of that bond rating call, they're very interested, um, in making sure that there's, um, security in our finances and savings, if you will.
You said it's not part of our bond rating. Isn't it part of our?
It is part of our, okay, I said it's not a small part of it.
Right, right, so if we go into next year and we haven't done anything, uh, to materially change this, is it gonna affect our bond rating in a year? When does that have an impact, when do they wanna see more of a cushion?
Sure, it's more of a trend they're looking at. So the last time, so you, you closed twenty four with meeting it, but the last time, you were short on that policy, so there was discussion. So one time, small amounts doesn't mean a rating downgrade in our experience, it's more the trend, because you're growing, so your budget's growing. If it's continually going like this, your fund balance, that is not a good set of facts with respect to your bond rating.
So we, we're there now, there isn't any reason that we know of today that it'll be going below that. So, we're at the trend line, we had that blip, but I think that was more of a, um, product of overestimating building permit fees. Um, and so we've been more conservative with that in recent years. But, you know, I think the big, the headline for, for staff here is that we're gonna be watching this and there, we could be in a position in twenty twenty seven for that budget to say, we need X amount in the twenty seven budget for, to build forty percent fund, uh, balance.
My last comment, before I turn it over to Jessica here, is in the long term plan, in the general fund, you don't need to go there now, it does show a levy amount to build that fund balance, because we make no assumption on budget surplus, we're not saying, oh, we think you'll have a surplus. No, we simply say, if you are balanced every year, this is how much you would have to levy in additional dollars each year in order to meet that forty percent policy.
And, and one last item, Lynn's gonna go back to this slide, this is.
Which one did you want?
Where it shows all the funds.
Oh, where I left off, so seventeen.
This is something that Jess and Tammy helped us out with, with a strategic kind of plan, is that the general fund has been segregated, so that's the forty percent. And then all the capital, uh, investments are separate funds, and so they don't count against the forty percent. And so that, because in essence, those are savings accounts as well, and so the forty percent counted against the general fund makes that kind of quote unquote easier for us to reach that target. Um, and so that was a, a important kind of, a critical path item to, to make sure that, um, we're in the best position to succeed on this.
Can I ask a couple of questions? So right now, we are not putting away money to get us to this forty percent. However, we're kind of naturally getting it, because the sheriff's department, we don't pay them what we budgeted for them, because of the vacancies in the sheriff's department. Um, but in twenty twenty seven, assuming that the sheriff's department is fully staffed, we might have to.
Yeah, there, and it's not just the sheriff's office, like, uh, like the public services director position was vacant for a year, we other, have other staff vacancies. So it's, that's probably the biggest, uh, item, but I think it's a, it's something that the council isn't used to of having to budget for something that's unallocated and there's specific and probably, uh, more intentional messaging on how to share that with the community, because it's, you know, it's not transactional. You're not gonna add fifty thousand and then get the service, it's just going to kind of the back of the house, and so that's kind of hard to reconcile, I think, for many.
Well, what that prevents us from doing is saying in August, like, yeah, we ran out of money, we'll get paid again in, is it September, October, for the second?
December.
December?
Yep.
So, we can pay our bills, right?
It's a, I wouldn't say it's, it's not a really a cash flow issue, it's just the best practices for fiscal or financial management.
Okay.
Is the concern that we've kind of made it based on circumstance versus strategy?
Are you asking?
Yeah.
I was just asking, it was just more of a clarifying question than a concern.
All right.
Um.
Because it sounds like we're, we're kind of coasting along because of circumstances.
Yeah, I would say that's for, like in, you know, mid two thousands, early two thousand teens, uh, the city used to contract, uh, outbuilding inspection services to the city of Cologne, and so that was, you know, that was a great way to build fund surplus, because at, you know, it was a revenue generator. Uh, we don't, we no longer do that, haven't done so for ten, twelve years. Uh, we have a nice, tight budget, um, but if you look at this, I'll use the example of, uh, Carver County has, uh, called the yes account, it's the year end savings account. And they, their vacancies and other projects that don't occur build a fund that's in the millions of dollars. And we don't have a companion to that. Um, and so, I don't think this is a bad thing, it's just a matter of, uh, being intentional and knowing that if circumstances don't allow for it, you may have to budget for it, rather than it just happening, because a couple of things happened in a. you may have to budget for it rather than it just happening because a couple things happened kind of that were fortuitous for the city.
Okay, and then my my follow up question is, is again, like budgeting for that forty percent, is that in your assumptions when we're looking at like tax rate?
It is, yes, because we assume your budget will be balanced and we assume the only place that you're gonna get that additional fund balance is from levying that.
Okay, okay.
And maybe, because I know this is being taped, I wanna be clear, the city, this isn't any shortcoming, the city didn't do anything wrong or miss anything, it's just that your budget's growing because the city's growing and therefore it requires more fund balance as a percentage. So it's not that anything was missed or anything like that at all, it's a challenge that every growing community faces at some point. Jessica.
All right, so I am gonna go through the enterprise funds and then get into some of the governmental and capital funds. We don't have every fund in the presentation this evening, most of the funds are in the plan that you have, we've made note of the ones that we don't really model out. We do model them internally just so that we're able to tie back to your financials, but just know that we're keeping things somewhat high level. One, so that we don't keep you here all night, but also that there's these certain funds that are are more materially impactful for the city. Where you've got a lot of ins and outs, you've got bigger projects to be aware of, so that's that's why we've selected certain funds, but not others. So we'll start, as I said, with the enterprise fund, so with the water rates. So this is consistent with what we've talked about the last couple of years, so three percent increases throughout that planning period, so out through twenty thirty five for all of the fees associated with water, so your water connection charges, your base fees, and then also the fees that are charged based on the amount of water that you use or your volume charges, and then also looking at that three percent increase also for your water access charge as well. And then for sewer, we've got the base fee increasing from five dollars to eight dollars in twenty six, then adjusting to eleven and then to fourteen dollars. And then after twenty twenty eight, going into a three percent annual increase. So the council may recall that this is a bit less aggressive than what we had discussed last year. So we were looking at five dollars increasing to ten and then to fifteen and then to twenty. The reason that we backed off here is because of there were some certain large capital improvement projects that had been pushed out several years. With that in mind, we had, you may recall when we talked about, well, why do we have to have these these strong of increases so quickly? It was because we needed to get to that revenue sufficiency point and do that quickly. Now, because of some of those projects moving out, we've got a bit more runway to deal with, so we can take some of those smaller increases. So that's why you're seeing that a bit different than what we had discussed previously. For the volume based charges, we are still recommending that you keep that at a five and a half percent increase. That's really driven by the Met Council and their disposal charges that they pass on to the city. So we're anticipating that those charges are gonna continue to increase pretty aggressively, so that for planning purposes that we keep that in. This is one of those things that we do say that on an annual basis, you take a look at this and see what Met Council is doing, and then you can sort of adjust from there. But for right now, just based on our experience and what we've seen with their increases, that we keep it on the higher end. And then three percent increases to the water connection, excuse me, sewer connection charges and then also to your sewer access charges as well. And then for stormwater rates, we are not planning or recommending any changes to the stormwater base fees at this point. We are suggesting three percent increases for the stormwater area charges. When we first started looking at the stormwater fund, it was in much worse condition than it is now, so it's starting to look very healthy. And with that in mind, we know that the city's going to be going through in the next couple of years, a stormwater sort of review to determine what that rightsizing is for both residential, multifamily, commercial properties. So at this point, we don't see any reason to adjust those fees until that study has been completed. And here's just a snapshot of what your fee schedule is proposed to look like. So looking at the base fees, so for example, just looking at that top one with water going from twelve dollars and seventy six cents to thirteen dollars and fourteen cents, and then so on and so forth. And the customer example bill here, so kind of lining up the water, sewer and storm altogether. This one is just based on eight thousand gallons of water used per month. So of course, as we're seeing those increases across the board, with those utility fees, anticipating, of course, that that monthly utility bill is going to go up as well. The development fees, so these are your connection charges and then also your sewer and water access charges, and then the stormwater area charges. Again, three percent for all of these, we have quite a few more line items with the stormwater area charges just based on density. And then we have some comparisons here, so these are also in your report in the appendix. So just kind of lining up with some of the other communities and and staff gave us some direction on which communities to model against. And these are the same communities that you would have seen in the last two updates that we've done. So looking at this on a sort of comprehensive basis, so again, water, sewer and storm, some communities don't charge for storms, some do. And then what we do here, because all communities are a little bit different, not only in that some of them bill monthly, some of them bill quarterly. And then also, they have different tier structures than Carver does, and we see that all over the place, just different, different structures, different sort of, in those tiers where you sort of cut off at, okay, if you use more than five thousand gallons, you go to the second tier, et cetera, et cetera. So we try to take that information and then convert it into something that makes sense for Carver. So when we're looking at this, we've taken all of the twenty twenty five fees and we don't look to twenty six as we don't know what those fees are going to be, obviously for the other communities we know are recommended here in Carver. So we look at the twenty five fees, we do that conversion, and then we sort of line up the individual communities. So you can see Delano here at the top, Elbourn Market, and then Carver there, third at the top, and so on and so forth.
Before you go on, I wanna, you can leave it on this one too, so with those other communities, they're facing the same challenges. So and we do work with quite a few of those communities, let's just take Corcoran for example, they've been looking at a stormwater utility enterprise and introducing it. So point being, in how you compare and you think of that three percent or the rate increases that Jessica reviewed with you, these other cities in comparison, they're facing the same challenges with the Met Council fees, they're facing the same challenges with development and having to put in that infrastructure before all of the development occurs. So it'll be interesting over the next few years in your comparative cities, how these charts look. But just think of that when you look at it, just, oh, we're gonna be three percent, so then we're gonna be even higher. No, that won't be the case because these other communities, including some double digit increases just because of what they're facing.
And Tammy, just for the, the sake of every city has its own story, I think Corcoran, some of their water actually comes from Maple Grove.
It does, but they built a new plant for their northern area, so residents who in commercial that lives in that area will be paying city fee. The ones in the south pay their water volume fee is based upon Maple Grove. But the city has infrastructure and all those things, so it's complex. My point being, that's a great example of the city that they're feeling that pressure on those utility rates, they have to address stormwater, which I know they're looking at creating that enterprise fund too. We're just picking one of them, you could pick some of the others too, and they're facing similar pressures.
I was looking at this when I was out in the car, this is unfortunate, I think we just, Delano just dropped off here. So Delano should actually be at the top on the list. So this is the comparison based on a a larger user, so the first one we looked at was eight thousand gallons, this one's fifteen thousand. So Delano should be at the top in this one, like it was with that first one that we looked at. And then from there, the rankings are pretty much the same as what we looked at with that first slide. And then the next comparison will be the thirty thousand gallons, so there again, you see Delano coming back in. So again, ranking's very similar to what we saw with both eight thousand and fifteen thousand as well.
You you know, I would offer as an editorial that as you use more gallons, we don't necessarily wanna be the cheapest because as folks use more water, that puts more demand on having to provide that supply for, via more wells, more water treatment, et cetera. And so I think, you know, one of the things that we still have on our list of things to do is look at the tier system because as you, you know, if you start to use thirty thousand gallons of water as a single family residence, that's an awful lot of water. We've had deals that have gotten close to fifty thousand gallons, and so the cheaper that that water is, the more use there's gonna be and then the more demand for infrastructure, so it's a, it's more of an art than a science, but we've functioned on the mentality that we wanna make kind of the everyday water that you use for cooking, cleaning, et cetera, the most affordable. And then as you use more, that's where the cost goes up, and so one of the conversations we wanna have with the council when we look at the tier system again in either later this year or early twenty six.
What is the average usage of a single family home in Carver for water usage in a month?
I would say probably five to six thousand. Okay, so I'll pause really quickly, any questions on the utility funds before we get into some of the capital questions? All right, so here, like I said, we're not looking at all of the individual funds, we pick in sort of a smattering of the ones that we feel are more impactful for the city. So of course, your eye's gonna be drawn to the green line, and that of course is the public services facility that currently is planned for twenty twenty eight. Other than that, there's a lot of fluctuation throughout the years. The other anomaly right there that you'll see, so there's some park development, that's the landing project, and then also for fire there, that's where the ladder truck is coming in. So those are really the only sort of two outliers that we draw your attention to, like we said, otherwise it just sort of fluctuates throughout the year based on the funds that we're looking at here.
Just one like piece, I think this is a, I just wanna point out like a conversation opportunity on that public services piece because we, you know, the long term plan has it in twenty eight, and later on in the presentation, you'll see like options at different, not options, but scenarios at different price points. But a lot of this will fluctuate based on, you know, what you see for design development. And then frankly, just something that is probably really evident to you already is, you know, you could push it up to twenty seven and how much is that gonna save versus construction in twenty eight or twenty nine? So there's a lot of different things for you all to consider as Andrew and his team kind of build this concept. And we have a spot in the work session agenda to talk about feedback and observations you have from visiting some of the facilities. But looking at that and like seeing Andrew's face when he saw that, I just wanna point out that this is like, it's a big challenge, but I think we all know that it's out there, and I think the nice part about it is we have a lot of runway to have those conversations and a lot of information to gather, and again, just another advertisement for this process. So like, okay, we see that, do we like that, how can we adjust it and move it so it's, works for you, works for the community, and so on and so forth.
All right, so in, looking at those capital projects, so from there, then we start looking at, okay, how are we gonna pay for these things? So we've got a number of different sort of sources built in here, so we have property tax, so you're levying, obviously supporting certain projects. We have the all other sources, that's in blue, so that would include things like local government aid, MSA dollars for support the street projects. You've got probably some investment revenues in there as well, park dedication transfers in, which that's bigger, that's more impactful for capital projects. One, for example, where we have transfers in from the enterprise funds, where they're sharing certain machinery or tools. And then of course, some fund balance in there, and then finally, we've got some bond proceeds. So you'll see in twenty six, twenty eight, and then thirty one, we have some bond proceeds scheduled in order to support some of the larger projects that the city has planned.
Is the, am I reading this right, in twenty six, the negative bond, is that going into debt, street maintenance?
No, so that's on purpose, so you'll recall that when, so when the city purchased property for the public services facility, you did some inter fund bonding.
Okay.
So we've got bonding scheduled for twenty six, rather than have you do a nine hundred thousand dollar bond issuance in twenty five. So that's why you're seeing that sort of borrow from fund balance, is because you're repaying the fund that you took it from, and then you've got some bond proceeds coming in to allow for that forty percent, thank you. Okay, so of course, you saw just now that we do have some debt issuance plans, so then we'd like to look at that in a more comprehensive way. So of course, the blue on the bottom, that's your existing debt, you can see that start to drop over time, and then we've got the new debt sort of coming on. So we've got the twenty six and that'll build a little bit, and there's just some incremental changes in the first year, you'll have interest and then you'll build in some principal as well, so that's why you see that little difference there. And then twenty eight, that goes up again due to the public services facility, and then in thirty one, as I mentioned, we've got the ladder truck coming in there as well. And then here's the debt service that goes along with those bonding plans, including your existing debt. But this is where we might start to see some opportunities for thinking about how the public services center or facility is funded or how the debt service is structured, I should say. So you'll see that there are sort of larger jumps between twenty eight and twenty nine and then between thirty one and thirty two. So currently, as Tammy said, we are just using level debt service for the purposes of modeling that particular project and with the ladder truck project, et cetera. So when we're looking at this, rather than have debt service sort of make those larger jumps, you do have the opportunity, rather than just doing level debt service, to do some structuring, so you kind of step into that debt service and it sort of has a sort of upward trend rather than just sort of a a large jump. So as we get closer to that project and we're able to do some planning based on, you know, the details are a bit firmer, we'll start looking at different structuring options for the city. When you're structuring those bonds differently, of course, rather than level debt service, you're gonna pay more in interest over time, but for the purposes of planning for the levy and making that a bit more palable for residents, some cities do like to utilize some structuring so that again, you don't have those large jumps. So here, again, looking at the tax levy for debt service, so this goes back to exactly what we were just talking about. You might have some opportunities here for managing what actually, how the the debt service levy kind of moves ahead. So again, that big jump from twenty eight to twenty nine, we may have some opportunities to smooth that out a bit. General fund, we talked a bit about this, but this slide goes along with that next one that we looked at before about how we are planning for some savings built into the general fund. But really, this is just meant to show that over time, that we, of course, are anticipating due to growth and the levels of service that the city will provide, that your expenses are going to go up over time. And with that, we're gonna see some pressure on the property tax levy, and then we've got some other revenues that are built in there. So we've got the LGA, we've got charges for services, funds and forfeitures, et cetera. But generally speaking, those other revenue sources, we tend to hold those almost flat or about two percent of an increase when we're planning for the long term. As we don't wanna plan for huge jumps in LGA, for example, if that were to come off, of course, that's gonna have an impact on the tax rate, but we model that to some degree and then, of course, with the property tax increasing over time. Do we wanna spend any more time on this slide?
I.
Go.
Sorry, um.
Don't be sorry, this is the.
No, I say, no, but here's the real sorry is, and I was looking at my notes, I probably asked the same question last year.
That's okay.
Um, but that first bullet point, policy states, is that a state statute? Is that a policy the city wants to go towards or is that a policy we have in place or that you recommend?
So, rule of thumb is that you wanna have your fund balance set somewhere at least thirty five to fifty percent. And the reason being is because you get paid effectively twice a year when you get your distribution from the county. So when we think about the general fund versus enterprise funds, for example, where we have monthly revenue coming in, a lot of cities think about, well, we should have at least a fifty percent fund balance because that gets us halfway through the year. We know we have some other revenues in the mix there too, but forty percent is is certainly healthy.
Could I also call it like a best practice or just good?
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
I I also take things very little, so.
That's completely fine.
What's the policy number?
The rating methodology, they they like to see those larger fund balances, they just do, as as Tammy talked about, it really does sort of signal to the investors that the city as a whole is healthy. And then when you're going through that rating process too, the analysts wanna make sure that if you have a policy, that you're abiding by that policy because you set that for yourself, so if you're falling below that, that is something where they wanna see, okay, how are we gonna correct that? So, yeah, we do spend a good amount of time modeling this because it is such an important factor to the city.
And then with getting payments on twice a year for the city, is it saying that never dip below forty? Or is it saying like on average, that? Or is it saying like on average, like?
Yeah, when you're, when you tie out or when you finish your year. So as of when you finish, we just got the twenty four audit back, of course, a few months back. So that's where you wanna make sure that you're at that forty percent. There's gonna be times where your cash balances are gonna dip down, there's gonna be times when it's above. But in terms of fund balance, it's as of that year end.
I have another comment, and Jess is probably gonna have to rush through the rest of it. We talked about this last year too, because you're rating, and we had talked about triple A, and how do you get there? So we work with some of the triple As in the metro, who their fund balance on paper is a hundred percent or above. The reason they have a triple A is not because there are other underlying factors, it's because their fund balance is so high. I'm not recommending that you go to a hundred percent, but we talked about, you know, what are some things? One of the things you can do is to build up that fund balance even higher than the forty percent. That may not be a good decision for Carver and for your policy and your tax rate. But just, I wanna talk about last year's conversation, we had that conversation too.
That was probably Eric's question though.
I don't remember who asked it, but the question, how do you get to a triple A?
I'm pretty sure it was you, Eric.
Sorry, Jess.
It was a good question, you're good. Okay, debt service funds. So really, in, in the debt service funds, what we're wanting to make sure of, of course, in, in and all the capital projects funds, is that you're maintaining a positive cash position within the funds. So of course, we're planning for some additional debt issuance. So the reason that you're seeing this cash balance start to build is because you're collecting those dollars ahead of when you have to make the payment. So you're collecting it a year in advance, which is why you see such a large cash balance. But again, it's increasing because of the fact that we are anticipating additional debt issuance for the city. And then here's your debt service funds, kind of where these resources are coming from to make those payments. A good amount of that is gonna come from property taxes, of course. There are some other revenues. That's mostly coming from transfers in from the enterprise funds, for example. So if there's a certain project where there's some support coming from water, sewer, or storm, but primarily driven by property tax here. All right, street maintenance. So this is gonna fluctuate from year to year. And that said, we do have a good, healthy balance of cash within that fund. So we don't have any concerns about this based on kind of the way things are modeled currently. There are, of course, some, there is reliance on the MSA dollars, so municipal state aid. So that's where you're seeing that non-property tax revenue, we've got some bond proceeds then for twenty six. And then as Brent mentioned previously, so one of the things that we did in going from twenty four to twenty five and now even into twenty six, is that we're separating out some of that property tax and depositing that directly into your capital projects funds. So that's, so we're not having those transfers sort of add to the expenditures within the general fund. Cause again, we're trying to keep that at forty percent. So we're doing some moving around of kind of where dollars are deposited, but this is a good example of that. So as you would imagine with street maintenance, it's going to fluctuate from year to year. So that's why we're not really seeing a trend here, it's just sort of up and down. But again, modeling this, a good positive cash position here. Your equipment fund, this is starting to build some cash here. So looking at the first several years, obviously, the cash position is certainly respectable, but it does tend to grow over time. What we would say about that is, one, some of these capital expenses are pretty expensive. So it could knock that cash balance down pretty quickly. But the other thing to keep in mind is that when we're looking at the capital improvement plan, we have a much better idea of what we need in the next three to five years than we do at the level for the next ten years. So as you're using that equipment and understanding what that lifecycle is gonna be, and that's why we're comfortable with building that level of cash here. Just because again, we know in the near term what we need. It's a, it's a bit more of a guess as we get a little bit further out. This is just meant to show kind of where the support for those acquisitions are coming from. So good amount of property tax revenue, there is some non-property tax revenue in there. Again, those are transfers in premier enterprise funds. And then the blue line is just showing that those expenditures are going to fluctuate throughout the years. And the municipal buildings fund. So again, public services facility is that orange line in the middle. The reason that we're showing some bonding in twenty six is what we mentioned before about the use of that inter-fund loan to purchase the land. And then we'll reimburse that fund with bond proceeds in twenty six. Okay, last two slides. So just generally summarizing, again, we are very strongly relying on a number of assumptions when it comes to like the development assumptions for the city. So that's gonna have a big impact. So something to certainly keep in mind, and as projects move ahead, that it could have an impact on your tax revenue projections, and then also your utility revenues. And then the specific timing and cost of those capital improvements will change over time. Just as we were going through this exercise, it changed a number of times, we moved some things around. So that's completely normal, just something to keep in mind as we're going through future updates. And then of course, we're just gonna hammer this in a little bit more, the long-term plan is not gonna be your budget, et cetera. It's meant to be a snapshot. You've got great staff that are very plugged into all of the various projects that you've got going on. So I don't think that we need to have this reminder of like stand up and look at it every year, you guys aren't doing that. So we're just happy we started the process.
And then just one plug for Lynn and her team. There is, part of our strategic plan is that peer city scorecard. So this is another list of kind of factors that you could consider with how strong or weak our long-term financial plan is. And just one comment, it's, I don't think it's a mistake to see that some of our peer cities that have the lowest tax rates also are getting the most revenue with franchise fees. And so if you think about what, you know, for example, like Elbertville, if you had three hundred thousand that you could take away from the twenty twenty six levy, what that would do to the city's tax rate? Just cause, just being around my other colleagues in the metro and just understanding how they're using that to fund street maintenance projects and so on and so forth. Again, I'm not proposing that we go into the franchise fee arena. But the reality of it is, is it lessens the tax rate. And so to look at just one of those things is probably not an accurate depiction of the financial strengths of that community.
Thanks for putting that up. And you're right, like we can start collecting franchise fees.
Do we know what?
Whenever we want, however, I'm trying to think, you and I were on council before you were here. I don't think, so Eric wasn't, it was early twenty twenty, right before everything shut down. We had a really thoughtful process, and we heard from our residents, attacked by any other name is still a tax. And here we are, still longer collecting franchise fees. And we, I think we do a good job, it's real inside baseball, but we do a really good job every year when we talk about the budget. It's reminding our residents that. You have a question?
And I can ask it offline too, but, or if somebody knows, just let me know. What does Dayton, what are, what are their franchise things that they're putting the fees on? They were one of the highest, like it would be like sixty five dollars a resident.
Yeah, I'm not sure what, I mean, the common ones are electric and gas, but I don't know them all.
You're still paying the money, it's just how it comes in. And we chose not to hide it from our residents. We said, this is what it is. Great, you can have it on your electric bill in this little tiny writing, it's still coming out one way or another. We just take the brunt of it, cause people don't always understand that these communities that look so much lower have them coming in through franchise fees.
I did the work last year, and I asked, I think it was Cheska, Chan, and Victoria, how much they received each year in franchise fees. And going back many years ago, I forget when, but Cheska made more money in franchise fees than we collected in our general fund that year. So it can be significant.
Can I ask a tax rate general question? So one of the things that I think people ask in the city is, when do we reach this critical mass? When is the city large enough that everyone's contribution starts to lower some cost? And what I saw in the tax rate discussion, that starts to drop in about twenty thirty. I know there are all kinds of things that go into ultimately what you pay. But tax rate drops in twenty thirty just because we start hitting that, that mass?
Based upon the assumptions in the plan, that is correct. But the challenge becomes then too, and now I think of other cities that we work with that are more mature, challenges that when they did not put away funds to replace that infrastructure that developers paid for initially, now they're challenged with larger levy increases in order to replace that infrastructure. So yes, given the assumptions, you noticed that correctly. But I just a note of caution, as the city ages, those costs become more costly.
Well, we've got costs from Met Council that are out of our control. So things like that, water and sewer and.
Exactly.
I get it, that, that does not translate into lower rate. But it, it is that point where population starts to impact what we pay, or what, what everyone pays overall. That was it.
Great question. Questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Good seeing you guys.
Thank you.
All right, next is the twenty twenty six enterprise funds. I'll send Mr. Smith's.
Okay, thank you. This is the first look at the twenty twenty six enterprise funds. A lot of what you're gonna see here is, was previewed in the previous. So just let me know if I'm covering too much here. But as you know, the city operates the three enterprise funds, water, sewer, and storm water. And they were provide, they were established to provide utility services to the city and to residents. And so we issue a monthly bill based on these services. And as Tammy mentioned, we are required to keep a three-month operating expense and following year debt service. This is our fund balance policy that we require. And then a following year of cash ac- capital acquisitions to be pur- to be purchased, as well as future capital improvements. So that is our goal when we're looking at all of the enterprise funds, water, sewer, and storm. So looking at the twenty twenty six capital projects for water, we have annual projects of oversizing and street maintenance that may or may not happen each year. So we put us, put aside a hundred and fifty thousand for the oversizing, as well as fifty five thousand for those street maintenance. And when I'm talking about street maintenance, it's the waters portion of the street maintenance project. Coming up in twenty six, we're looking at water system needs study. That's gonna talk about where the next water plant will be, where's the next well field, and then other water analysis. And then water treatment plant site communication upgrades, which will be improvements to SCADA and different filters at the water treatment facility. And you had a presentation from Dan at Corin Maine talking about the AMI system. And the water portion of that would be three hundred and eleven thousand. And then infrastructure for the extension of, to the public services, and then the land acquisition for the treatment facility number two. Twenty twenty six sewer and storm water, I put on one side, cause they fit. Again, we have those annual service, capital projects that we plan for every year. For the sewer, oh, sorry, sewer, well, main oversizing is two hundred thousand a year that we put away, and then forty five thousand for that street maintenance. Each year, we do plan for the MS four storm pond maintenance. We have not done this yet, but we are starting to really analyze our storm, storm water ponds. So that seventy five thousand that we have been putting away was, I think, twenty five in the past, will start being used in the future. So as you can see, the theme of the previous slide was maintenance, maintenance, maintenance. We're doing a lot of planning and maintenance for the future. So here too, lift station maintenance study, forty five thousand. Carver Creek lift station maintenance, four hundred and fifty thousand. So second set of pumps for the lift station, they've all been approved and will arrive and be, be installed in early twenty twenty six. And again, the AMI system, including the meter upgrades. Let's see, what else? Andrew, did you wanna add anything to that?
Nope.
Okay.
Didn't think about it.
For the employee highlights, we're looking at a market increase, people call it COLA, of three point seven five percent, along with all employees reaching their next milestone. That's for the full-time employees. Six point seven five percent increase for all part-time and seasonal employees. And right now, I think we're planning for a fifteen percent increase for health and dental. We should find out in the next week or so what that will actually be. And then a seven percent increase to the HSA. The paid leave premium is going to be point eight eight of all wages paid to every employee. So some operating expense highlights, here's where the maintenance is. So staff plans to be getting a wa- a well maintenance program. And they're gonna be inspecting each well and pulling one well each year, inspecting it, and then going to the next well the next year. They wanna fix problems before they happen. It's more expensive to fix it when it fails than to analyze it, repair it, you know, and maintenance it. So that's why you're going to see a lot of maintenance ideas, and that comes from Andrew and his team. So the sewer, um, yeah.
Can I just ask a question about that? So we've got six wells, is that right? So is the idea that we do it once every six years, and then once every seven years when we get seven wells, and, okay.
Yeah, it's just, yeah. It's on a routine schedule.
Yeah, good idea.
It's kind of the same thing for the sewer too. They're going to contract with a sewer line cleaning company, and you'll do like one section of the city. The next time, another section of the city, and you're just cleaning out all those lines and with routes and different things like that. And then you'll just keep rotating, and you'll just keep doing that over and over again every year, so. Other professional services, that they're going to do that filter study, and then SCADA upgrades. So we have some of that in the operating here, and then as well as in the capital plan. And then also the sewer is going to have some SCADA upgrades. Getting everything hooked up to fiber is going to be so nice. Communication failures will be no more, hopefully, so that's great.
Lynn, briefly, can you define the SCADA acronym for me, please?
Sure, Aaron. Andrew.
Uh, super, and it's something that supervises, like computer automation.
It's the computer automation.
Yeah, it's basically just, like if you're at a manufacturing plant, they have SCADA systems too, right there.
Yeah.
Monitoring those computers and machines. We have the same thing that monitors our pumps and our wells and everything that turns on. We know when it turns on, how long it lasts, or things like that. So a lot of the problems that happen, like water may break, or you know, a lift station pump didn't work, the operators, they can look at SCADA and they know what's wrong with it right away.
Okay.
And they can do that from their bed at home, because they can look at it on their cell phone and not have to come in. Or, you know, if there's an alarm going off, they don't have to be here physically for that alarm going off. They can silence it, it's not a big deal, we'll get it to it in the morning. So the SCADA system is basically.
Or, oh geez, I have to get out of bed right now.
Yes, so it's the backbone of your, that's like your security system.
Okay, thank you. I've just heard that term thrown around a lot today and never had it defined, so thank you.
I didn't define it perfectly.
Mayor, council, we need some extra time with the current AV setup, so if we could pause this to the regular meeting.
Yeah, sorry to, no, that, that was fine. With that, I would entertain motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion?
Second.
And a second, all those if you ever say aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion passes, thank you.